We are reconvening the meeting. I will now defer to staff.
Thank you, Mayor. We have confirmed that June 18th is the 120-day expiration. The claim would have been filed February 18th. So, we have June 18th. If it's not acted upon by June 18th, it's automatically denied as a matter of law. So, that doesn't mean that we can't still engage in settlement conversations with Mr. Schultz, even after the claim's denied, leading up to even the day of trial. That's the way that it works. But June 18th is the deadline.
So, just so that not only us, but the community understands, should the vote be to deny the claim, it does not preclude prior to trial for the city to work with Mr. Schultz's attorney for a settlement that will be agreeable upon both parties.
Correct.
Okay. So, I just want to make sure that that is clear. Prior to us going into the vote, we had a request for another individual to provide public comment, Mr. Clark Trammell. Would we like to put that up to a vote to see if the body would like to permit that? Yes.
It seems like every week we do that. So, I don't -- it seems like there isn't a procedure or a process, and I'm concerned about that.
The process is very clear with regards to the times that individuals are going ahead and speaking. However, because of history, if the claimant themselves actually goes ahead and decides to show up to advocate on their behalf, we typically do allow them. This is why I am requesting, if the body would be interested, to allow Mr. Trammell to talk, we would have to suspend the rules of the council to allow an individual to speak, which is why I'm inviting the vote.
But he's in public comments, so he's going to talk twice?
Now, this is an action item, and therefore, at the point that this is an action item, a member of the public does have the opportunity to sign up to speak for the action item. So, just following the procedure, the request would be, is the body interested in suspending the current regulations that state that the individual has to sign up before 5:00?
Followed.
Thank you very much. Second, we have a motion and a second.
Okay, point of order. Oh, because I wasn't finished. So, he can -- someone can come and speak on this, and then at public comment, he's going to speak on something else, correct?
At the time of public comment, an individual can speak about anything that they wish to address the city at that point in time.
But at an action item, they have to speak about that action item?
They have to speak to that specific action item.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion. We have a second. If there's no comment, we will proceed with the vote to approve Mr. Trammell to speak for four minutes.
We have seven yes.
Seven having voted yes, the motion passes. If Mr. Trammell would like to address the body.
Well, good evening, and I didn't mean to cause all this confusion. It was my understanding in speaking with the Honorable Mr. Miller that once something goes to an action item, I am, or others, the community is entitled to speak. I don't know if that procedure you went through was necessary, but we're here. And Madam Mayor, it's nice to see you doing well. I understood you haven't been well, and you're back on your feet, so you look great.
Thank you.
I'm here in support of Chris Schultz, and I've made that very clear. That's why I'm talking about this action item. He's a good citizen. He's invested in downtown. He's an honest man with high integrity. He's not somebody that's just coming here to get something for nothing and to cause trouble for no reason. In fact, he's not causing trouble. He is here making a legitimate claim that the facts probably bear out. He is correct, and that is a decision you all have to make. And in response to Councilwoman Clear, I would say this: Just because it's recommended by legal or staff doesn't mean they're correct. You all approved the decision, not legal, not staff, you. And that's why Chris, and I appreciate Councilwoman Miller giving him the chance, and you all approving that, to speak, because this is important to his business and his life and what's going on. It also sets a precedence of this council on how you act towards the citizens in this community when they have claims to file. They're probably all legitimate, and if you're responsible, then step up and pay it, period. Conversation doesn't go any further than that. There's nothing to talk about. If the facts bear out that you're responsible, don't try to find a way to get around it. I'm saying you are, I'm just making a statement, then pay the claim. Step up, just like you would expect somebody to step up for you if they owed you something. The process is pretty simple. It's like renting an apartment. Did the city go through and do an inspection of everything downtown and the status it was in before this work was done? And then did they go back and check the status of those buildings to see if anything had changed that might cause a liability that they were responsible for to repair? I don't know that that was done. If it wasn't, it should have been, and in the future, it needs to be done, because then you wouldn't get into this kind of a conversation. He said, she said, or I think the problem wasn't ours, it was yours already. Well, no. You had done the inspection right up and down the street, which I would have required, and I would have known what was going on in every building. So, when the work was done and somebody came and said, "Listen, I got a problem now," no, you don't. The problem was already there. Or, yes, you do. We have a responsibility. We'll go back to the contractor and make him fix it. Mr. Jensen, you are aware of Jayhawk problem over there with the sewer. This is just me speaking, not the Jayhawk, but I'm involved over there as a volunteer. They've got water coming in to -- well, they don't have water because the sewer line is all crapped out, which is believed to have been caused by this contract. So, it isn't just one element downtown. Now, we've got two and maybe more. So, I'm just advising you as a businessman, that's my position. Schultz are good people. They deserve your consideration. I hope you be very careful when you vote, because this has deep, far-running ramifications. Thank you for the time. I appreciate your wonderful speaking.
Councilwoman Clear.
As a rebuttal, if I wanted to be legal and I wanted to be on staff and do their jobs, I would. But part of my job, too, is to trust our staff, which I do. That doesn't mean that I never look at what they say. I mean, I know about this case. I've heard about this case. Now, I've heard the other side, and I choose to go with the staff. And there's nothing wrong with that. It's just as being, you want to go with that? I mean, that's -- that's fine. You're right. So, we just agree to disagree. But it -- but don't assume or say that this is my responsibility only to make sure that everything's -- eyes are dotted and Ts are crossed, because we have staff to do that. I don't have time to be the city manager. I don't have time to be the legal. I don't have time to be the clerk of court. At some point, we have to trust, unless I see something glaring that's not true, and I haven't, then we have to trust them. Thank you.
Do we have additional comments with regards to the matter? Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Your Honor. So, I would just make one. So, Chris, I feel very badly for your situation, and I totally understand. You know, I have an old building in downtown, and I know that it's a pain in the butt to keep those up. And whatever or whoever caused the damage, the damage is there. In the United States of America, we have a court system with trained professionals that sort that out, and they allocate liability across all parties that participated in that. So, if we do that, if we make this decision here, we're taking all the liability, regardless of how much is actually our fault versus how much is the contractor's fault. And I'm not comfortable with that. So, my heart goes out to you, and I stand with you in your fight to get your life back together. I wholeheartedly support you in that endeavor, but in this case, I have to vote to deny this and have it run through the court process. That's how our society is set up to go. This is not an open and shut case. That's why it's taken this long to look at. This is not something I can look at and clearly say, you know, we're responsible for it, you're responsible for part of it. It's not easy to just look at and go, clearly, this is where the damage came from. So, I will vote to deny this so that it goes to the court system, as I expect it will. I wish you the best of luck in putting your life back together. I feel very badly for the situation you're in, and I hope that you all will continue work together to come to an amicable resolution that will get you back together as much as you can. And if we have to bring in other parties and share liability, then the court will say that. But unfortunately, that's how the process works. And I, you know, again, I feel badly it's taken us long, but this is a complex case, and I do feel like that we, as the city, have put effort in to try and make sure that it is fair, and I hope that the process continues to be fair. And you do get a fair shake, because you're entitled to that, absolutely. Thank you.
Additional comments from the body? Councilman Mace?
I just wanted to express my disappointment that this was presented to us with only six days. This should have been on the agenda a month ago. We've had 120 days, and here we are at 114. And that's frustrating, because I'm not sure that I'm comfortable voting on this today. And it's frustrating, and I don't know what button I'm going to push yet, but I wish that I had one more week to talk about it and to review this pack of information that we got.
Councilwoman Miller?
A question to piggyback on that. Is the 120-day turnaround our rule or someone else's?
That's our rule. So, we could vote to give it another week?
Are you talking about, it's a, not the council's rule, it's a requirement that in our -- yeah, in our code?
It's in the city's.
It's a state law. It's part of the tort claim.
It's a -- oh.
Sorry.
Just to repeat, I was asking if it was our rule, meaning the city's rule, so we don't have any ability to extend the 120 days?
Yes, it's going to be part of the code, so, in state law. It's not a governing body rule. You'd have to --
That was my question. I would still rather visit on Monday, if that's what it takes, just to make sure staff has had a look at this. That's my position, so.
Deputy Mayor?
Just for the record, I believe Monday, there's a Jado meeting at our council time.
We could meet at noon. I mean, I just feel like if they have a thin application and the staff has not had a chance in case there's something else, I'm fine with that.
Mayor, I need to remember that we have a budget meeting scheduled for Saturday morning at 9:00 a.m.
Oh.
We could meet and discuss this again, and Legal can present you the information. We can go into closed session, discuss it, and then vote.
So, Councilwoman Miller, would you like to remand your mega family amendment and change it from the next council meeting to Saturday?
I don't know that I actually stated when it would come back. I just wanted to remand it to legal for them to have time to review it, and I wasn't sure what they needed. So, it'd be up to the clerk in terms of what she's got, but if --
We have time to be able to do that, to post that meeting and conduct it then.
Okay. You can do that. Councilwoman Clear?
I guess I need to ask Legal, do you need this time to look over it?
It's absolutely fine. We can absolutely do that.
Good again.
And I think if that would make people more comfortable, I would much prefer to do that and talk about it on the 6th. It would make me feel better.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
At the very least, I think we owe Mr. Schultz that. So, I will wholeheartedly support having our folks take a second look, and would love to put the time in Saturday to make sure we get this right on his behalf.
Councilwoman Ortiz?
What time are we looking at on Saturday? Because we're meeting from 12 to 9:00 to 12:00.
Would it be possible to do it at 11:00?
We can set it whatever time we work to ensure we have a quorum. The meeting will start at 9:00 regarding the budget, and so we could either do it at 9:00, or you can choose another time. Somebody can make that motion.
Councilwoman Ortiz?
Or noon, if we, that's right, that's true. Or we could do it at noon, complete the budget process, and do it at noon, if you would like.
I would go along with that. I don't, we've already sent a notice out that that's our budget time, and now to say this is a special meeting time, I don't think is appropriate.
So, noon?
So, I think it should be something like that.
Councilman Padilla?
You know, I appreciate City Manager making that offer. I think that's going that extra step. I would support that, but I want it to be clear to the speakers that I have full confidence in you and your staff. I feel confident in voting on it tonight, but I do think that it would be the more pleasant thing to do, to allow everybody that opportunity to get one more look at it, to maybe convince them that we're not trying to railroad anybody, we're not trying to rush anything through, that due diligence has taken place. But I don't want anybody to get the idea that I'm going to start second-guessing staff at every decision they bring to us. Thank you.
Councilman Lester?
I do have a question in regards to this and moving forward. I want to make sure that I'm reading this and I understand it correctly. It's my understanding that an outside firm vendor, a private company, was used for the engineering of this project. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And it's my understanding that the construction work that was done was not done by city staff, it was done by an outside contractor, correct?
Correct.
And then the issue that we're talking about is after the design phase was done, the engineering phase was done, the work was completed all by an outside contractor. We're talking about our inspection of the completed project, correct?
It was an outside engineering firm and design. Actually, it would probably be better if Public Works Director, Mr. Peak, Dr. Peak, would cover how the process worked with the project and who was involved. I was not here. I'm familiar with it, but I wouldn't want to misspeak.
That's fine.
Jason.
I think that pending the information that Dr. Peak is going to provide, he will decide his vote.
On Saturday?
No, no, with regards to remanding it.
Councilman Lester, I guess just to answer your question. So, yes, the project did involve an outside engineering firm doing the design work, an outside contractor doing the construction. And what I'd say is, over the life of this project, there was both, at times, in-house city staff that was the project inspectors, but there was also a period of time where we had outside consultants providing that inspection, just due to turnover, not having resources available for city staff.
So, it would be safe to say, then, at the very least, there were multiple parties that were involved in this project rather than just the city itself, correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. My only request was Saturday is that we do it at 8:00. I must leave town shortly after the meeting to meet an already-scheduled event in Oklahoma City.
I'm getting a lot of lack of consensus with that time.
I may not be able to be there to vote then in that case, and if so, I send my regrets and my apologies.
Okay. So, at this point in time, the vote that we have in front of us is a vote to remand the information that we have to Saturday in a special meeting at noon, following the budget meeting that we're going to have.
Mayor, there's a motion on the floor. I'll have the clerk read it. And may have to have a friendly amendment.
Yes. So, Justin?
Yeah, the motion was to refer the claim, along with the information packet, to the legal department for further review. So, probably need to maybe withdraw that or amend.
Based on the fact that our budget meetings are somewhat fluid, and we have a deadline with this issue, but we could adjust some of our budget discussions around this issue. From what I've heard, if what you want is an amendment to have a time and date specific for us to bring this back, I would suggest 11:30 on Saturday, the 16th.
Is the person that seconded amicable to that friendly amendment?
That would be Councilwoman --
Councilmember Ortiz?
Could we do an amendment and do it at 9:00 and then roll into the budget?
It's fine with me to do it first.
In that way, because we're all planning on being there at 9:00 and handle business. Can we do an amended notice that goes out, because we've already noticed up the --
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, and then put that as part of the agenda packet? I would second it. I would second that.
We have a motion and we have a second, that this item would be looked at at 9:00 in the morning on Saturday prior to the budget meeting. Would an amended notice as well for the public? So, we have a motion, we have a second. If there is no further discussion, we will proceed with the voting.
We have eight yes, Mr. Lesser voting no.
Eight having voted yes, the item is passed. We will discuss this Saturday at 9:00 in the morning. We now move to the non-action items. If the clerk would read.
A is discussion concerning International Property Maintenance Code amendments.
City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, Deputy City Attorney Mary Feeney will go through, discuss some basic changes that we're looking at making in the IPMC, and answer any questions you may have regarding the item.
Good evening, governing body staff. This is the International Property Maintenance Code, and we've had it for four years. And the time's come now to tweak some of the notice and the legal provisions dealing with notice of process of violations. And so, what you should have in your packet are the ordinance changes. We have two ordinances. The summaries are broken down into the subject matter, the line number, what the current verbiage is, the change, and the reason for the change. So, tonight, I just want to take some of your time to highlight the major changes, okay? Let's start with the first ordinance. The footer is local amendments for 1818, and this deals with just generic IPMC violations, weeds, inoperable vehicles, sanitation, housing. We're going to deal with those, and then we've got a separate ordinance for unsafe structures, which generally leads to demolition. So, two different processes. The main change is personal service. Currently, we have the option of serving a notice of violation by personal service, but the ordinance doesn't say, well, what is personal service and how is that affected? So, what we've done is we've taken the rules of civil procedure that are used for lawsuits, and we've put them in here so that you can personally serve someone by handing it to them. But if it's a corporation or entity, we didn't know how to serve that entity, so now we do, because we can serve them by serving the resident agent who's listed in the Secretary of State's office. We can serve it at the office of the entity. So, we've got a lot more options if we want to serve personally. Second issue, certified mail. We also serve by certified mail. But we have the provision that says that service of the violation notice is ineffective until the property owner signs the green card. Well, a lot of people don't pick up their certified mail, and as a result, we don't have good service. So, what happens is we end up publishing it in the Metro News, which delays the process. It increases the city's costs. So, we've removed that provision, and now service will be effective on the date that the notice is mailed. Publication notice, again, if the property owner hasn't signed for the certified mail, we publish it in the Metro News. In 2017, we spent $35,000 on publication, and that's not necessary. In looking at state law, neither posting or publication notice is required. So, we are recommending eliminating publication for general IPC violations. Those are the main changes for the general IPMC violations, and I'm going to stop to see if you've got any questions before I go on to the unsafe.
Thank you, Your Honor. So, just a quick question. On the certified mail, are you including transit time in their reaction time? I mean, if I have 14 days to react to a notice from the city, is that 14 days from when the post office guarantees they'll deliver that to my whatever mailbox I specify, or 14 days from when you mail it?
It'll be 14 days from the date we mail it, but we'll build in some, we'll build in a three-day mailing time when we put in the notice when you have to comply.
Excellent.
And we'll handle that through a standard operating procedure.
Yeah, because I've literally had mail I've sent from one address to Topeka to another take a week to get through Kansas City.
Yes.
And what I don't want to do is cut out people's ability to remedy a situation in a timely fashion, because the U.S. Postal Service can't deliver a piece of mail across town in a reasonable amount of time.
Yes.
So, as long as you have that covered, I'm happy to get it.
Okay.
Councilwoman Miller?
If I could ask, we went to the legislature to talk about knocking back that state requirement to publish only, I don't know, seven or eight years ago. Is the reason that legal now feels that we wouldn't have to do certified just because you are, because we would have accomplished the new definition of personal service, or has something changed in the state law?
Nothing's changed in the state law. We've got the option of either serving by personal service or certified mail. That's in state law.
Right. So, you're thinking that we, that the pressure's off the certified and publishing because we're going to actually get it done by personal service?
Well, that's an option. I don't know whether the inspectors are going to actually utilize personal service, because that takes time. Certified mail is a lot easier. But in some cases, we're at least giving them the option to serve by personal service.
Okay.
Whether they do or not is up to them.
Well, what I remembered then was that the legislature dialed back how much you had to put in the published notice, but you still had to do it and make reference to where you could read the whole thing, so.
Are you thinking maybe of unsafe structures? The publication notice?
Actually, we were talking about weeds and nuisance mostly at the time, and all the code violations, but the examples were mostly exterior, as I recall.
Okay. I don't think so. I'm not quite sure I know where you're coming from. Well, raise the question today, and we can, I can look where we can. Okay. Thank you.
Do you have no further questions?
Okay, let's go on to unsafe structures. I will not take much of your time for that. That's the ordinance that has the footer, unsafe structure dated 4/1818. Currently, we've got unsafe structures and the general IPMC violations all mushed together, and it's very confusing, so we decided to separate them. So, unsafe structures, there's really not a whole lot of change. We always set a hearing for an unsafe structure, because that's generally going to lead to demolition. And violation notice is served on the property owner and anybody who's got a recorded interest in the property. So, we give opportunity to anybody who might have an interest to object to the demolition of that property. We are reducing the number of times it has to be published. If we, if personal service, certified mail is appropriate, currently, we publish twice in the Metro News, and we're reducing that to one time, because the state law only requires one publication when the owner is unknown, and we don't know who it is. So, that will save some money. It'll also save some time. The hearing process is unchanged, and that's really the only change in the unsafe structure and demolition. These changes would be effective, it says July 1st in the ordinance, but we're going to delay it till September 1st, so we can get all of the administrative processes ready to go. Questions on unsafe?
Deputy Mayor?
So, just sort of a general question. Is there a state law that requires us to use a newspaper and not our website?
Yes. Official newspaper. And that needs to be changed, but at this point, it has not been changed.
That's the one I was talking about, where they dial back how, you'd have to print this much. Print this much.
Yeah. Well, okay. All right. Newspapers are these interesting creatures that are sort of left over from hundreds of years ago. But they have a website, though. That's how I consume my CJ news, is their website. I don't get the paper.
No.
Well, that's true, because they're too expensive.
Any other questions? I know you've got a full agenda.
Additional comments or questions for staff? Additional comments or questions for staff? Councilman Hiller.
This is of particular interest to me, and there's not time just this evening, but did staff discuss the issue of putting in the, the whole section that we've discovered we're missing? And that would be on what they call on the street mothballing. I mean, not every structure that is unsafe today needs to be demolished. And one of the problems we have run into is that we have, there are elements that people don't want to see in a neighborhood that we need to make sure are getting abated. But, I mean, I've got one right now where the code-compliant staff used the fact that they could designate it as an unsafe structure in order to put a notice on the door that would warn homeless people that they should not be going inside and sleeping there, but there's nothing wrong with the house. So, we, we need to make sure that what we put in this and any changes in procedures accommodate the fact that sometimes a house just sits vacant for a long time, or for a period of time. And, you know, in the best of circumstances, the way houses are best if they're vacant is that they don't look that way. They, they are just closed up and secure. They're, the grass isn't growing and things growing all over the house. Ideally, they don't have boards on the windows. Ideally, they don't have a notice on the front door that's kind of like a bullseye. And ideally, also, we are making sure, for instance, that the roof doesn't leak so that the house is not, the structure's not deteriorating. And I know that our staff has learned a lot with, over the last couple of years, with this demolition initiative, that not everything that was an unsafe structure that day needed to be demolished. So, I wondered if you had talked about the procedure that's in between an occupied structure and a vacant structure that doesn't need to be demolished?
No, we didn't. We just focused on, and actually, this is really coming from the legal department. These are changes that we need to make so we can move the process along and eliminate some of the delay and eliminate some of the costs. So, no, we did not look at that issue.
City manager.
Mary, in page six, it looks like there is language regarding emergency secuance.
Yes, there is.
And the emergency secuance language allows you to take action to secure a building and assess the cost to the owner. So, that may not reach as far as a true mothball procedure that maintains a building, but it does allow us, if the owner does not take steps to secure the building, we may do so, which will allow us to secure the building for a period of time. And it's not true mothballing. I know there is a procedure you do there, but I think that goes to the fact that that's quite expensive to do, and I'm not sure the city, given that we may or may not ever end up with ownership of this building, would not want to go through as a process.
Mothballing isn't expensive, but it is something you have to keep in mind if you don't want the building to deteriorate. And so, I wanted to ask at this point if, hopefully, we won't move on. I would prefer that we not move on it too fast, because I'd like to be able to make sure that we've looked through it with that lens as well. I know that when we were talking about the IBC, we were talking about this, what do they call it? They, there's something that the staff had that's kind of old at this point. It's another section of the building code family of codes that's for, how I wrote it down somewhere. Anyway, I just want to make sure we're not setting up a procedure that's a fast track to demolition when a lot of properties that are vacant at a certain period of time don't need to be demolished. And so, I just, I was asking at this point whether you'd looked at it from that lens, and if you haven't, I would like us to before we vote on it. That's all. Thank you.
Additional comments or questions for the body? Seeing none, thank you very much, Mary, for your presentation. We now proceed with item B.
B is discussion regarding the renewal and adoption of the Neighborhood Revitalization Program for years 2019 through 2021.
Mayor?
City manager.
The planning director, Bill Fiander, will cover what we are looking at for as a Neighborhood Revitalization Program Amendment for the year 2019 through 21. This program is an important economic development tool for us to improve our underserved neighborhoods. So, we're excited to be moving forward this amendment. And I'll turn it over to Bill.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Good evening, governing body.
Mr. Fiander?
Yes.
I would, I would ask your indulgence for a second. As I was listening to the conversation and we proceeded with moving forward, there was somebody signed up to speak on this item, and I would like to allow Mr. Leibert the opportunity, if he would like to come in and address the body to do so.
What are you talking about? Precedent?
Mm-hmm. The IPMC.
I just figured it wasn't important.
No, so sorry, Mr. Leibert. We were all going, and typically, my cue to call a person up is right before we proceed with the vote.
Being the nice guy, I said, "I'm not going to bother you."
So, I apologize for that.
I'll make my comments pretty, pretty brief about this. I wasn't going to get into detail about semantics, but I do agree with Ms. Hiller about a comment she made about proceeding too quickly on demolitions. And I've had, you know, as a lawyer, I take some of these cases, and I've had several of these houses that have been actually rejuvenated, that were under demolition orders, but the people, well, for lack of better word, got it together and found some resources and then redid the houses. And so, it'd be a shame to see some of these houses knocked down that could be saved. And I think you can drive through Topeka and see the result of that, where they knocked a lot of houses down years ago, and there was nothing to fill it back in. And we've had that discussion many times at High Crest when I was president over there. We don't want our houses knocked down. We want them rehabbed and rehabilitated, and we want the codes enforced, so that they don't get into those bad situations. And so, anyway, that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leibert. I appreciate you. Mr. Fiander, thank you so much.
Good evening once again. I am pleased to open up discussion tonight on a recommended Neighborhood Revitalization Plan for the years 2019 and 2021. As many of you know, we were here last year trying to extend the program for a year so we could let our Neighborhood Health Map catch up to it. We've done that. We've published that, so I'm pleased to present those results tonight and for discussion. Again, a little bit of background to go through this. Some of you were not here last, when we, when we looked at this. Topeka was the first city in the state to adopt a Neighborhood Revitalization Plan for their locality. This was authorized by the state for any city to do that back in '94. And since then, the city's approved seven plans, and we've renewed them over the years, and we've always had 100% participation from the taxing entities that are affected by those, which is a good, good sign. And as I said, this current plan expires at the end of this year, so that's why we're here before you to start that process to renew it. At the heart of the program are what we call tax rebates for property taxes. Anybody who makes an improvement in the qualifying area, and they apply for that at the time that they start their work, at the building permit stage, if it increases more than 10% for residential or 20% for commercial, then you get that extra property tax increment caused by your own improvement. So, that is the essence of what this incentive is, and I'll walk you through some of that, those elements here in a second. But just to remind you, this has been a very robust program over the years. We've had over 750 applications, over 550 have been approved. Last 10 years, we've had about 10 to 20 a year. Last year, in of itself, was right at the high end of that range, just over 20 applications. Along with those applications come investment, and that totals about $425 million at this time. Last year was another banner year, record year, in terms of the amount invested through this program. So, this is very successful, attracting that type of investment, which otherwise may not have happened. That return on investment is $9 for every, for every $9 invested, we give back a dollar in the rebate. So, it's a pretty good return on investment as we move forward. And we also do that in a strategic way. Oh, before I get, there is additional tax revenue that comes from. So, we're not just rebating, that's, the idea is to, it's an incentive, but eventually, after a 10-year rebate period, the taxing entities do then get the benefit of the tax, taxes that were caused by those improvements. And since '06, all taxing units have realized over $19 million. See, Topeka, broken down, is $4.3 million over that time period. And as I was going to say, this is, the investment is done, meeting our strategic goals for, as you can see here, 75% of all the investments going into our intensive care at-risk areas, our highest priority areas for the city. Almost 600 new units have been created under this program since residential units and infill units, and that's really important. We'll touch on that in the recommendations here. Downtown has benefited greatly, $133 million. Historic properties, $70 million. So, that's quite a, quite a jolt to both of those strategic areas. So, let's get to the meat of the matter here. The NRP is a, has a three-pronged model that we bring before you. One is how the rebate amounts, the standards for those rebates, the area of which you can qualify those in. And then, we have built-in BUT4 tests, meaning without this program, without these incentives, the improvements would not have happened. So, how do we prove that? How do we enforce that assumption? Okay, standard rebates. The rebates have not changed in our proposal. The standard rebate is still 95% over the first five years, 50% over the second five years. We do have, in the past, have had an additional rebate or a bonus, if you will, for where you get a full 95% for 10 years. Those have been the intensive care areas, as well as historic properties or districts. We have added a, we're suggesting to add another additional rebate category for infill housing. This is something we've really noticed, certainly over the years, when we do our Neighborhood Health Reports, that when we do infill housing, it really makes an impact in those, in that, in those scores. But I would also, I think one could argue, the reason we have a Neighborhood Revitalization is because we probably have not been, do not have infill housing, new construction enough. And so, that's one of the things we really want to try and, and support more under the The area itself, the second prong of that, of the model, again, as I said, we updated the Health Map, so we aligned the boundary of the area with our at-risk and intensive care areas. However, we did, that ended up expanding from the last time about almost three square miles, so that did end up including more neighborhoods. Some of those are, and I handed out a little better, clearer map tonight, just so you can take that, the one that we had in the, in the plan, I think. It's the same, it's the same thing. It's just, it just shows a little bit better on the, on the page. So, those areas that is, that show up in pink, hatching, again, there's about five of those, East End neighborhood, part of Oakland, parts of College Hill, Elmhurst, Randolph, Norton, as well as an area south, in South Topeka, between 45th and 53rd. We've also included South Topeka Boulevard that connects 45th with Southwest 37th as a important gateway corridor into the community and makes the area contiguous. We've also included three former, well, three subdivisions that were formerly part of the Neighborhood Revitalization Area in past plans. In fact, they were started in large part because they were in the area and the incentives were in place to build the infill housing, single-family housing. So, we have, we have, we are proposing that we include those again, so they can build out. There's a few lots left in Drake's Farm up north. There's a, there's about eight lots in the Cowden subdivision out southeast, and then there's about 40 lots in the Southern Hill subdivision, also out southeast. In addition to aligning with our at-risk and intensive care areas, we also have to follow state law in qualifying areas. And so, there is a test, if you will, for, and criteria for establishing areas that have substantial deteriorating structures, predominance of buildings that need restored or preserved. We do that, we kind of prove that with our data, our health data. Just to give you an example, the neighborhood, the proposed area has half of the city's vacant parcels. It has two and a half times the poverty rate as the non-Neighborhood Revitalization Area. 72% of all unsafe and boarded structure cases are, happened in this area. When we, we have 25% of the, of the units in the city. And then also, this area has, is only one-third the average of residential property values of the rest of the non-area. So, those are sort, that's the sort of the data that backs up much of what we're trying to, to show. We also have an AG's opinion, Attorney General's opinion, that has come in the past that limits municipalities to not extend this citywide. So, and the intent of legislation was to kind of focus in those core areas that are deteriorating. So, that's kind of how we frame the area, through those three, three sets of parameters. Oops, yes. Lastly, there's some BUT, the BUT4 tests have not changed in the plan. Again, one of our BUT4 tests is the, is the area. We are saying, our assumption is that without this program, without these incentives, these improvements would not hap, would not have happened otherwise. And that is, and it's a very streamlined, nonsophisticated program. You fill out an application, you make your improvements, you increase your property value, and you get a rebate if you do increase it enough. So, it's a very streamlined-type program, but we don't ask, we don't ask for proof that you would, do you, were you going to do these improvements anyway? So, one way to kind of enforce that assumption is to narrowly, more narrowly target those our most investment-challenged areas, and we do that with the Health Map. We also have a deadline on applications, so we don't have people coming in after the project has started too, too far down the road, and they didn't know about the program, and they come back and say, "Hey, I, I didn't know about the program." Then, and that's, we don't want it to be a reward for improvements. We want it to be an incentive. We want you to know about the program and do the improvements, and it makes a difference in how much you improve. And then, lastly, the investment that has to come along with it. We do have a threshold in here that has to increase by a certain amount. So, it has to have some significant investment, and it's just not normal maintenance or improvements you would be doing otherwise. So, those are sort of the three things that we really use to, to try and, and enforce that BUT4 assumption that we make. Okay, so, lastly, the, what, the next steps here, obviously, we're having a conversation tonight, open this up, but we will, we will need to take this and do a similar thing with the other taxing entities this summer, to present this to them. They will have to sign off on this as well, and so, we have to brief them and, and share comments as well. Well, we'll collect those comments, bring them back to you in the fall. We will advertise for a public hearing, hopefully adopt a plan, and then go back to those taxing entities for interlocal agreements by the end of the year. That is, that's the normal process that we've been through. Seven other times we've done this. So, we're on track, but tonight's kind of our, our kickoff, if you will, for that. So, with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Bill, I want to thank you for doing this.
I, I think that we have so many tools in our community that most people are not aware of, and this is one of those key tools that we could use with our LUMCOM, which is, I know, I love saying that word, acronym, but it's our Land Use and Growth Management Plan. My question to you is, as we have been looking at the neighborhood revitalization areas, are we aligning with our opportunity zones as well?
So the, uh, Madam Mayor, the opportunity zones, um, would include what is on your, on your map, the most, these are large, the opportunity zones are, are larger census tract areas, so, um, although I have not checked every square inch to see, but we would, we can, and I'm, I'm seeing some nodding here.
And, and the reason that I ask is because I just came back from the conference in Boston, and one of the things that we had was a, a whole forum on economic development in communities, and how do we revitalize neighborhoods? And there was a lot of talk of using incentives with opportunity zones, and then bringing in public-private partnerships, and developing other land trusts and land banks. My question to you is, as we're doing this, are we communicating with our developers so that they know what's available? Because it seems like, as we know, the, the permit requests for the city of Topeka to have housing construction has, has lagged a little bit, even though we've seen a bit of an increase. And I'm trying to figure out, how could we incentivize or communicate these tools to our developers? And how can we also keep on bringing up pieces of land together to offer to them, so that they know that they have all of this available? And we could some way, somehow start getting more construction going inside of our city proper, especially with infill?
Uh, great question. Uh, one of the reasons we, we, um, came back with the infill housing as sort of an additional bonus, uh, to, to even further incentivize that, is we've had several conversations with developers who have come to us, uh, looking for something more, um, looking for something, a project that they might, may or may not do, uh, but if they knew that they had those full 10 years, um, then they're, they're sold. And so, the only problem is, is we have to wait, uh, till the beginning of next year, um, for this to, to take effect. But if they know that, and, and they've, and that's, we communicate that way through those sort of channels, when you talk about bigger developments, uh, repurposing of buildings, uh, you, you will see some, uh, in the not-too-distant future coming before you.
Awesome.
Uh, and we're hoping to see more, uh, if this passes, and we can get the full incentive for infill development.
Thank you. We do have somebody sign up for public comment before we go into the comments of the body, since this is a discussion item. If we could please have Mr. Joseph Ledbetter come and speak.
Thank you, Governing Body. I support this revitalization map, and I've, uh, had several discussions, uh, ongoing with planning about, um, this idea of the infill housing. And, uh, a number of years ago, when I was first president of High Crest, uh, 4th Law School, in, I was about 2003, '04, uh, I proposed, uh, a infill development down at Southern Hills and also one at Cowden. And so I have had these discussions with, uh, planning. Uh, the Cowden, uh, subdivision, when we did that, the first, and that's actually part of High Crest, we actually got four new houses out of that, which doesn't sound like a lot, but when you look at, uh, how housing has been going overall in the city, and especially, if you look at the east side, uh, that was quite remarkable. Uh, that was about a $500,000 investment by the private sector. Uh, Southern Hills was much more successful, there was about 35 houses built out, uh, over 10 years, and that came up to about a, about $5 million new dollars worth of tax base for the city and 501 and, uh, the county. So, I considered that very successful, I was actually, uh, disappointed when it wasn't continued, but I have been talking to them again, and I think, uh, there's about 40 lots still up there, uh, and I think, uh, I think it would be a good project. Uh, so I support this, I, I like the fact that they've extended the intensive care across Kansas Avenue from High Crest West over to Topeka Boulevard, which will include White Lakes. And I like this, uh, the fact they've pushed east, uh, past Payless, uh, on that area, I'm looking at the map. And then the south, uh, uh, gateway, uh, where there's some blighted buildings, uh, old pallet factories and other things there that might, uh, you might get some, uh, developers would actually do something down there because of the traffic patterns. Uh, it would be, uh, probably potentially very profitable, depending on what they wanted to do, and the price they got it for. But, anyway, I, I support this, and thank you for your time.
Governing Body, are there questions or comments for Mr. Feiner? Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you. Um, Bill, so the proposed addition of NRA, is it our neighborhood relation, that, that includes Belmont, that's what that is, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, um, because I always thought Belmont should be in there. Um, does that mean, but, but it's not intensive care, is that correct?
Correct, uh, Councilwoman Ortiz, it's, it's at risk, so we include the, any at-risk in the map.
I'm surprised it's not still...
It, it got worse, uh, I was outpatient for, for, that's why it wasn't in the, the boundaries for the last couple of times, so, so it, it has declined, uh, at least in terms of the health data.
Okay. Um, I think my concern is, um, I think this is a great program. We've worked together on this in East Topeka South and East Topeka North. But, do we still have property in East Topeka South? Because I thought we had some lots that we bought that we haven't done anything with. Um, and I think that would be maybe on, um, Lafayette?
You're referring to, does the city have any lots?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Because we, we went through there, and we bought up a whole bunch of property, but we didn't fill up a whole bunch of property.
I'd have to look into that, uh, and, you, you remember, we did, we did several new infill houses over there. I don't know about Lafayette and if we have, uh, but that is part of, that is within the, the boundary of the program, um, but I don't, I don't know if we have ownership of anything over there, I can look into that.
Okay, because I'm gonna ride through there, I'll ride through there, and, and I remember, I know where the properties are, because I remember riding through there with you, who said, "We bought this, we bought this, we bought this," um, but we didn't fill some of those. Um, and, and so that would be my concern, and that's, that's been when I was president, so that's been, um, 15-plus years, or almost 15 years, you know, that, well, no, it'd be 15-plus, because, yeah, so that's almost 20 years. So that's, I, I think this is a good program, but, I know, I think we were the first ones, is that correct, Bill? East Topeka South, our NIA, were we the first ones to?
Oh.
Or maybe I'm thinking of the, uh, uh, the infill housing, yeah, that was...
For infill housing, you were one of the first ones?
We were the first...
Tennessee, okay, sorry.
Yeah, no, go ahead, go ahead.
I thought, I figured we were to start in Tennessee town, but you were the, the very next infill housing.
We were the first Habitat houses, and so you guys really kicked it off with Habitat.
Yep.
Yeah, but I, but, but I'm thinking, I know it's this program, and what we did was, we did, we bought up a lot of properties and a lot of land, but we didn't fill it all in, and I think we need to really look at that, uh, when, when we're doing that, to fill up as much as we can. Now, I know we've got a lot of Habitat house going, Habitat houses going up, um, but that's, that's just something I've had on my radar that I wanted to check out, because I know it's, um, Indiana, um, what comes after Indiana?
It's East of Indiana, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's...
Those, the Wall Street.
Yeah, yeah. So right, right in there between 10th and, and 14, you with me?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so, and, and I can think of almost three lots, um, corner lots as well. Um, so, that's just something that I would be concerned with, because I think, um, that's a great concern, if we're gonna start going in other areas, I think we ought to look, look at filling those up as well. Thank you.
Councilwoman Emerson?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Feiner, first of all, thank you for your presentation and for all your work on this. Uh, I, I too think this is a, this is a fantastic thing you guys are doing. Actually, just having a conversation with Councilman Lesser on Monday about the difficulties of getting infill housing in established areas. I did have a question, though, on the infill housing. We have the two areas, Mr. Padilla's and my district here, the Cowden and Southern Hills subdivision. Are the areas where this is eligible for infill housing, where this rebate, uh, is available, is it only the ones you've identified?
Oh, uh, Councilman Emerson, the Cowden and Southern Hills, those are outside of the area. So we, we've, anything inside the area is eligible...
Sure.
... blanket, uh, for the 10-year, full 10-year for infill housing. And then, in addition, we've included those three, uh, what I'm calling satellite subdivisions that are outside the area, since those were started because of this program. So that, that's where we've, yes, yes.
Okay, so it is limited to those, other than something already in the areas, it is limited to those two outside the area?
Uh, it is, yes.
Okay, okay. But my second question, probably a little easier to answer, and maybe you covered this in your briefing, if so, I apologize, but what is the difference between the standard rebate and the additional rebate?
Sure. Standard rebate is, anybody in that boundary would get a 95% rebate for the first five years and 50% for the second five years. Um, and what we're calling the additional rebate is, you just, you would get a full 95% for 10 years. So, so basically, it's, it's another sweetener for, yeah.
And so who does, I guess, and I'm sorry, my, my question wasn't very clear, what is the criteria for giving the additional rebate? Because obviously, everyone would like the additional rebate.
Right, um, you're, you're correct. So we've incentivized, uh, two things in the past, that was anything in, in the intensive care area and anything that's, uh, historic, or, or in a dis, historic district. Uh, we added a third one, which was the infill housing, we're proposing that, this plan. So it would be, those would be the three criteria to, to qualify for the additional rebate.
So infill housing in these two areas, then, would be 95% rebate for about 10 years?
Correct.
Okay, fantastic, thank you.
Councilwoman Heller?
Thank you, Mayor. First, good work, it's exciting, and also, it's really good to hear the comments from you, as well as you, I, um, about beginning to develop that marketing plan for infill. We have talked about strategies for infill, the long-range land use plan was targeted at that. I've, I've hung on to my notes from when those of us who were on the council considered this in October and decided to push it a year, so we had the new map, and so on. But the discussion then was that there would be some marketing strategies to really encourage, particularly the neighborhoods, to use it. I'm guessing that, that really hasn't happened much yet?
Uh, Councilwoman Heller, we, we did start some of that, um, just in the, in this year extension that, that we have, of getting out more to the, the community and to the realtors. Um, we've, we've kind of stayed, put, for now, until we know what areas we're, we're going into, particularly the new areas, but, um, no, we, we actually, we're doing a video, Molly's working on this with a video, uh, that we're gonna get out, um, to be more of a, uh, marketing tool for the program, how easy it is, where it's at, what you get for your investment. So, yes, we're, we're working on those.
Well, I, I really like that, I think, you know, much to kind of everybody's surprise, once we realized it, we put together a marketing, a booklet of all the different incentives for downtown that had never been done before, for businesses in downtown not that long ago, and so we might want to consider putting whatever tools are in, not just marketing one at, at a time, too, when we get to it. I, I really support this program. I have a question, though, because we did this also once before. Have you, with, with bringing this new one forward, the renewal forward, done a comparison to how our program, in terms of its terms, relates to others around the country?
Certainly around the state, yeah, we, we have done that. In fact, we did that, um, a year ago, when we brought this, actually about, right, this, about this time.
Okay.
Um, and it revealed, you know, that, that full 10 years that I've talked about, uh, that is definitely on the high side of, of, not many people are doing that, and if they are, it's very, uh, very strategic, only, and, and it would have to be approved maybe by the governing body, so our program, from the, from, from comparing to others, are, we're, we're above, we're above the, the average line, for sure, in terms of how sweet our incentives are, and I would say that 10-year incentive from 95%, um, but, kind of a by rights, you get that just by filling out the paper and do, obviously doing your improvement. Um, I, I don't see anybody that has that, uh, so that's, um, now, some will have longer, some have 15 years, but those are very specific, like, uh, Wyandotte County has a special area, they get 15, 20 years, and I think that has to come back for their bodies. So, you can go longer, you can go longer, it just have to, we have to bring all the other taxing entities along with us.
Now, and the reason I brought it up was, two renewals ago, we asked ourselves that same question. I had been to an IEDC class and found out we had the sweetest program in the whole United States of America, at least by everybody who was there, and they were like, "Whoa." And so we dialed back at that time to the, to the, to the 95% five years, 50% five years, because, you know, our goal was to have an incentive, but not to give up all of, we've, we're, we're not increasing our, our tax revenue here, and so, as much as I want this incentive there, I want to make sure, as we said on something else not long ago, that we're not giving away the store, that we're, that we're keeping a reasonable amount and still maintaining the incentive strong. So, that's why I asked that question. Um, you're still feeling like in our market, did you even debate it, or are you still feeling that in our marketplace, it should be this sweet?
Yes, no, I, I think, um, the, the standard rebate is, is in line with what we're seeing elsewhere. In fact, it's still a little, I would say it's above average. So that makes that full 10-year, uh, if you can make that a strategic one, where you're not using it everywhere, but you can use it for the one, things you really want, uh, that's really, that's, that probably separates us from 90% of the other programs out there.
So, and, uh, just for conversation, then, if we dial that back to 80% instead of 95, or didn't do quite as much, it might still be as appealing?
Uh, I, I don't, just from the, the conversations that we have, again, uh, with developments that come in and realize, "Oh, um, I do a historic project, I do, I've, I, I'm in one of these intensive care areas, or I'm now infill housing." That is, that is very important, that second five years, in, in my conversation with most people.
I wanted to ask a question, so we, so we'd had the conversation. One last clarification, we're adding four districts, and, and the reason for the four, they are all at-risk?
Correct, correct.
They're not necessarily NIA-eligible, but they are at-risk?
That's, that's right. The, the new health map, uh, had more, uh, at-risk block groups, so that's what we're including.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Your Honor. So you probably already know my question, is this as absolutely big as we could possibly get it?
Uh, I've heard this question before, um, the, and that's why I try to paint a little bit of a picture here. We have to draw a line somewhere.
Agreed.
And, and that's, we can't do the whole city as, as we know now. Um, so where do you draw it? So I, I think it's a, it's, in terms of qualifying it for the two things that are kind of leftover, one, does it meet the state statute? Uh, and two, does it meet what you want as a BUT-4 test, meaning you automatically get it if you're in this area? You know, it's as, it's as big as it can be based on our, our, our health policy and, and the state statute. I think if you, uh, could be, could it include other, you actually, in the state law, you can include, um, property buildings outside of this area, um, if, if they're deteriorating and if they're gonna be restored. A perfect example would be up on, uh, you know, Manninger Campus, those buildings up there, if there's, that are being restored, that could be included. So you can go outside the area, but I would say, is this as big as it can be? This is as big as it can be, and makes us feel comfortable that we're meeting those, those three tests that, that I presented.
And I bring that up because there's some debate that part of the reason Belmont slid down the hill when this was taken away, was because it was taken away, probably prematurely. But, you know, again, I, I don't know all the facts on that, um, that's just the consensus of the folks who were there. You know, they saw all this development, and then it just sort of stopped, and this program in a way, so, um, you know, it, it's an interesting time for our community, as it tries to reinvent itself, and I think we need to leverage all the incentives we can get for both infill development, redevelopment, and growth. So, um, if there's a way to encompass some of those other historic structures that not, are not in one of these districts, I, I think... not in one of these districts, I, I think we should look at that. I mean, I think that's an excellent suggestion. You know, I've read the Attorney General's opinion, and, you know, you're right, we can't cover the entire city as much as we would like, but as much as we can leverage tools to get our community to stand out from the other ones surrounding us, I think we have to, especially given one of our goals as the council is to grow our population, and we need all the tools we can do that. I think this is excellent work, I'm very pleased to see that it's expanded in, in some of these areas that I have driven through and needed. So however else we can leverage this as a tool to grow our city, I absolutely think we should. You know, I'm a huge advocate, if we have to go out and hustle for those building permits, and this is absolutely an excellent way of doing that. So I commend you and your staff for the effort, and if we can include those other things.
We'll look at those.
Yeah, I would love to do that. Thank you, appreciate it.
Additional comments or questions from the body?
Oh, yes, little, little, we don't, we're not trying to hide anything here, but City Manager reminded me, it's on the, it's on your map in fine print, maybe we should make that less fine. Any property that fronts the boundary is also eligible.
Awesome.
Yeah, and so that way, it, because it doesn't make sense, all the boundaries go down the street, doesn't make sense to be on the same street, and, and one side be in, and the other side not. So if you front that boundary, even though you're not in the boundary, you're in. And that's, that's how, that's how the Walmart out east was included, so, for instance.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, thank you so much for the information. At this point in time, typically around 8 o'clock, we take a break, and I know that the next item of discussion is going to take some time, and we have three individuals sign up for public comment, and after that, we also have our announcements. So we will have 10, not to exceed 10-minute recess, that way everybody could get up, stretch out, and then come back to the meeting, so I will see everybody back at 8:40.